Rob, you have the list ready? He's guaranteed us everything on our wish list.
We are, I think we're on air now. Oh, okay. Comptroller, when we have three or more commissioners, we are obligated to go into an open session meeting. That's why we're here. So, I hope you don't, I hope you don't mind.
I love the company and I love the transparency, so.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
It was an excuse to get Tamla Baker here to cover it.
Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to Washington County. Would we please stand just for a moment of silence and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting here today with Mr. Fran Cho, our comptroller of Maryland. He's visiting with Washington County. I'd like to call this get-together meeting to order. And with that, I would like to just say thank you again so very much for coming to Washington County and asking to spend time with Washington County's commissioners. We value every minute that we can get with you and we appreciate everything that you do for Washington County, and you do a lot. And next on that, I'd like to give the other county commissioners an opportunity to, if they have any remarks from Mr. Fran Cho.
Absolutely. Again, just echo President Baker's comments. We always appreciate having you here. We see you quite a bit and we take notice of that. So, thank you for coming up and supporting Washington County every time.
Thank you for those birthday calls and well wishes. They mean a lot.
They do.
I looked down at my phone, there's your name, and I got the comptroller calling me. But again, I want to thank you for always keeping Western Maryland in your thoughts since I've been a commissioner seven-plus years. You've been coming up here, visiting our businesses and recognizing our importance to the rest of the state, so a salute to you, sir. Thank you.
Very kind, thank you.
And would the administrator, Assistant Administrator, have any comments or kind words for comptroller?
I know what you, last time you had visited Cushing, and I think you've been doing some quite diligent work with the legislation to allow the breweries in Washington County and throughout the state more freedom to produce and sell their goods, and I know that's been very much appreciated by them. And that's just one example of what your work has done for business, as well as the governor, of course, here in Washington County. It's been wonderful to be, see the success that's come out of, out of your office. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, and yeah, I'm proud of the, what Hagerstown and Western Maryland represents as far as the potential for the Maryland-produced fabulous beer that millennials particularly really want and like. And I really want to thank the commissioners for sticking your necks out and sending a letter of support. And I can guarantee you that not only that bill that didn't pass, but that bill will pass next year and it's going to have some additions to it. And I'm very grateful for the support that we've gotten from 90 county officials around the state because everybody says this is a no-brainer. But, Paul, welcome to Annapolis. I mean, when you figure it out, come over and let me know, will you? Thank you for all your kind comments. I probably don't deserve all of them, but President Baker, thank you for letting me appear. I promise I'll watch the video that I'd like to see, but I'd love to just hear directly from you commissioners who are on the front lines.
If you have any, after you review the video or see the video, if you have any questions or comments, positive comments for the county, we'd really appreciate that as well. So, so with that, let's just go right down to general discussion and we'll go around and.
Can I make a brief opening statement?
Yes, sir, you can make.
Yeah, because I've got Emily Gontrum with me, who used to work for Mako and whose dad is the, I think still the county administrator for Talbot County. And Emily is in charge of our local elected officials, particularly the county officials. So, she's my point of contact. I'm delighted she's with me. And if I could just speak for a minute, because I do have such a great team, I always love the opportunity to come up here to Hagerstown. It gives me an opportunity to stop into my branch office, as well as my remote, new remote call center in the Crystal Building. At these two offices combined, my employees have fielded over 13,000 taxpayer phone calls since January 1st and nearly 1,300 emails. In addition, the Hagerstown branch office team helped more than 2,500 walk-in taxpayers, personally prepared more than 500 state returns. I have a dedicated team of 1,100 men and women. They all work extremely hard. They deliver first-class customer service. They're under specific orders from me to treat every Marylander, every taxpayer with respect and responsiveness and results. It's not good enough just to look at our citizens and say that's the way it is. We intend to be on their side, and I think we demonstrate that up here in Hagerstown. We have processed to date more than two and a half million tax returns. We issued more than 1.6 million refunds. Most of those refunds were from the time of receipt of your electronically filed return. It's 2.1 business days to put in your money back in your bank account. In addition, we have a second remote call center in Salisbury, and we move expeditiously to respond to taxpayer inquiries. We're, we're getting between 700 and 800,000 phone calls a year, and we, our goal is to have a live, friendly, professional voice of an employee of my agency on the phone within 40 seconds. Yeah, none of this elevator music and every once in a while coming back in saying your call is very important to us. Doesn't always work that way. It got a little congested earlier, you know, last week, so I can't guarantee everywhere, but the goal is 40 seconds, and the remote call center out here in Hagerstown is a huge help. As a result, we have a very strong national reputation for customer service and being one of the best offices in the nation. We also have worked very hard on tax fraud and tax thieves. These are, this is what the Taxpayer Protection Act was passed last year to help me with. It increased the statutory powers to more aggressively pursue, investigate, prosecute criminals who are ripping off not only the state through fraudulent refund requests, but also getting a lot of our citizens into, because of identity theft, into a lot of, lot of difficulty. We hope to continue to crack down on suspicious tax preparers. We've shut 150 of them down at more than 170 locations. We've already blocked 10,000 fraudulent returns in the last two months totaling $16 million saved. We're continuing to aggressively address what we call questionable returns. These are what we consider to be fraudulent returns coming from tax preparers. We recently blocked Hagerstown Tax Lady Number Two and CNA Financial Services. We basically say to these groups, look, everything that you're sending us has an excess of fraudulent returns in it. Come in and explain to us what the story is. We're happy to begin processing your returns if you'll come in. But to date, let's see, over the last few years, I think we've stopped processing 175 tax preparers. One, one has showed up. And I'm not sure whether we reinstated them or not, but it's a cottage industry out there, so I'm sad to report. As the fiscal watchdog of the state of Maryland, it's my responsibility to make sure that, help make sure that taxpayer dollars are spent wisely, not wastefully. That's why it was necessary to determine for Marylanders what exactly the federal tax cuts and jobs act that was passed in December actually did. So, we took two and a half million actual tax returns from Marylanders and actually ran them through a simulated, what the Congress came up with, to see what in fact would happen from the last tax year that we thought was a regular tax year. And, you know, the results were a little bit of a mixed bag, but they surprised me. Two-thirds of Marylanders witnessed a decrease in federal taxes. That was not what my party was claiming on my side of the political aisle, and I was pleased to report back to the governor and the legislature that, in fact, a significant majority of Marylanders were seeing a decrease in federal taxes. Unfortunately, there was a significant chunk of Marylanders who saw an increase in their state taxes. That was due to the favorable increase in the federal standard deduction. Many taxpayers were unaware that by going in that direction, they were also going to result in an increase in their state tax. So, the General Assembly, I see Delegate Quarterman is here behind me, passed Senate Bill 318, increasing the standard deduction for individuals, heads of households, and those married filing jointly. Let me just say for the record, that was a very de minimis effort, frankly, and I hope Delegate Quarterman and others next year will make sure that the money that Marylanders are paying because of the federal tax cut to the state of Maryland, that those hundreds of millions of dollars that have been kept by the state will either be put in the rainy day fund or returned to Marylanders. I don't mean to be, well, these visits out here to Western Maryland tend to be expensive for the state, but it's money well spent, but we have lots of money, and particularly that windfall from the federal action needs to be looked at very carefully. I know that you began that, Paul. I don't mean to put the responsibility on you, but that was a very small Band-Aid on a significant tax situation for many Marylanders. So, we've done a very good job in the Field Enforcement Office of keeping illegal alcohol Office of keeping illegal alcohol out of the hands of minors, out of Maryland retail establishments. My enforcement agency has seized more than 1.2 million in illegal tobacco products, represents a tax loss of over $600,000. We've worked vigorously in the office to promote Maryland's small businesses, particularly, but all Maryland businesses, try to ease the regulatory burdens that are constricting the ability in Maryland for many of these businesses to operate. My signature reform on TAP Act 2018, which the county administrator nicely mentioned, was a prime example to try to get government out of the way of these wonderful craft brewers. They're so innovative, entrepreneurial, represent 6,500 jobs, could easily represent 25,000 jobs within a few years if the legislature could just get out of the way and let them do what they're good at, which is producing great products and selling directly to consumers. The legislation that I put in essentially put us on an equal footing with Pennsylvania and Virginia and Delaware. It also put the craft breweries, brewers on a level playing field with the distilleries in Maryland and the wineries, which all we were asking for was equal treatment. Well, it turned into kind of a slugfest for some reason and got nowhere. But I am very optimistic that we have laid the groundwork. We've given the product. We've significantly increased the visibility of the issue and the importance of this sector to the state's economy. And I'm headed, yes, to Antietam Brewery right after this. Nothing better than having a cold Maryland beer after testifying before you commissioners. But common sense did not prevail this year in Annapolis. It's unfortunate. Thank you again for your support. We've only just begun the fight, and I think the coalition will be going back next year bigger, better, bolder, more bells and whistles. And I think they have now, you know, gone through the Annapolis experience, which predictably the first year is, this is too much you're asking for. So you go back the second year armed with some new legislators and, you know, a new perspective as to how the place works. And I'm optimistic that Maryland will be the number one state in the country on craft brewing. And Mr. Administrator, Rob, thank you for your comments because this is very pivotal to the state's business reputation and reputation with millennials around the country. I know it sounds a little bit grandiose, but I can't emphasize how much this particular sector represents Maryland. Governor Hogan has been terrific on it, but he's got a lot of irons in the fire down there in Annapolis. And I'm delighted on the Board of Public Works to report that he has had a moderating influence on the fiscal matters of the state. The procurement operation has been significantly improved. The number of single bid contracts has been dramatically reduced under his, since he arrived on the Board of Public Works. And I just want to say from that perspective, spending is, at least as far as the contracts we're approving, significantly more under control and tighter as far as the review. I don't know why I got into that, other than to say it's nice to be out here in Hagerstown.
Very Western Maryland.
I'm headed out to Rocky Gap right after this. And I completely agree with you, Rob, and others. And Jeff, thank you for your kind remarks. And Wayne, just being out here is so important for elected officials, not from this region, to understand the, both the needs, but also the unbelievable character of the citizens of Western Maryland. And I'm lucky that I have a job where I can come out and get buttonholed by people. So I'm the money man. I'm all yours. Go ahead, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Would like to thank Delegate Quarterman for being with us and joining us today. And I'd be remiss if I wouldn't ask you if you had a remark or a comment.
Only to echo the sentiments of the rest of the board here. Thank you to Comptroller for coming out here to Western Maryland, the city of Hagerstown. We always enjoy your visits. And we're personally very appreciative of everything you've done in the legislation to help out the craft brewing industry here, not only with the brewers here in Marston County, but throughout the state of Maryland. And just to clarify, I did support the governor's proposal as far as giving the windfall back to the taxpayers of Maryland. And we'll agree with you that the legislation that passed, as you said, is a, was a mere Band-Aid and not the true fix that we, minority down there, I think, that really were pushing for, hoping for. So thank you.
Yeah, no. And thank you for those, that clarification. And congratulations on, on your first year. And I'll leave it at that because you did a good job.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have any comments, questions for Mr. Franchow?
Maybe after the video.
We're not doing the video. He's going to take it with him.
He was told, he was told the beer's on tap already. So he wasn't interested in the video.
No, I don't mean to rush anything. I just, I would much rather hear right from folks because I know the baseball team and a bunch of other things are on people's agenda. So anything that I can help with, obviously with my agency, or more importantly, on the Board of Public Works, please at least note it for the record because I'd love to be supportive of things.
And that leads into my question. On the Board of Public Works, could you just give us a two or three-minute overview of what exactly the Public Works Board does and the responsibilities that you have?
Thank you. Yeah, no, that's an honor to do it.
There's changes.
Yeah, it's a, the Board of Public Works is a unique panel. No other state in the country has one like it. Why is it unique? It's made up of three individuals, the governor, the comptroller, and the treasurer. Governor and I are independently elected by the people. The treasurer is elected by the legislature. Every contract of over $200,000 the state enters into has to receive two votes, or three votes, but from the Board of Public Works. So we are sitting there every two weeks, looking at 50 to 60 contracts that need our affirmative vote in order to actually be authorized. So unlike the legislature, which is authorizing the allocations of the taxpayers' money, we are actually spending it. And generally, they're kind of pro forma presentations, but there are, it's, it's a valuable oversight panel for fiscal matters in the state of Maryland. We vote on about $10 billion in contracts every year. So it's kind of action central. Not very well-known. You're welcome to come down. Obviously, a lot of you have appeared, but we meet every other week like clockwork throughout the year. And I've grown to appreciate the fact that, for example, the board is authorized to reduce any state agency's budget by 25% when the legislature's not meeting for any reason. So it allows us to do real-time budget cutting, and the rating agencies love that capability. Under the O'Malley administration, we exercised it during the downturn. And in the Hogan administration, well, he wants to use it a lot more, but that's the, it's working out very well, let me put it that way. You're all welcome to come down. It's a wonderful, transparent, accountable body because anybody, no matter how you might be lacking in political connections or, you know, be a big contributor or something, anybody can come down and sign up on any day to speak at any meeting of the Board of Public Works. And that's, and they get the same kind of respect, responsiveness, and results that you would anticipate from Governor Hogan and Treasurer Cop and myself. It's a wonderful body. It's somewhat looked at skeptically by the legislature for some reason. But fabulous. And as I said, Maryland's the only state that has one. They have a lot of these board of estimates like they have in Baltimore City, fiscal boards that are appointed by either the governor or by the mayor of a municipality. And yes, there is, that is a kind of a Board of Public Works, but because they're not independently elected, they tend to be rubber stamps. Board of Public Works is, I said it was action central. You don't really know what's going to happen until the votes are taken. And there used to be a practice of going in the back room beforehand and deciding everything, the three of us, and then coming out and just moving through the contracts. I dropped out of that because I didn't like it. I thought it was, I don't think it had the right message to the public. So for the last nine or 10 years since I've been doing that, nobody is quite sure when these things come out that, you know, they have to kind of present things in the sunlight. Works pretty well, and you're all welcome to come down, of course. Thank you for the question.
I just appreciated the word oversight. So there's nothing wrong with that.
Yes, exactly. It's, I think good ideas come out of sunlight. I think bad ideas tend to, tend to come out of the back rooms, particularly if they're done impulsively or for ego reasons or something unrelated to the merits of the, of the subject. And that's just part of politics. But to the extent the board can offer an alternative, I think it's good. Thank you, Board of Public Works.
Any other questions?
One more, not, maybe not a question, just a comment, something for you to think about in your capacity as comptroller. Anytime we get a state-level official in Washington County, one of the things we like to talk about is the need to widen Interstate ID-1. And we had, at the start of our meeting, Julie Rahm, who chairs our Economic Development Committee, she had to leave. She is manager at Our Valley Mall, which is, I believe, our second-largest property taxpayer as a whole, but one of our largest, it's not the largest sales taxpayer in Washington County as well. And she's provided a statistic to us before that on a given day, the right day, if Interstate I-81 is closed down for a few hours due to a traffic accident, they could see a decline in one day of about $20,000 in sales tax that is collected that day. So obviously, that's something that your, your office oversees. And that's just one business. There's many other businesses up and down the I-81 corridor, 12 or 18 or so mile stretch here in Washington County. It's obviously a safety concern. Many lives are lost. It's a burden for our fire and rescue companies that have to respond to those accidents. But it's also an economic development concern. And just something I wanted to share with you, a statistic that I thought was astounding. It's, it's closed several days throughout the year on average. And that's just one business. $20,000 a day is what they could-
The proposal is to add a lane?
To widen to three lanes, yes.
Widen to three lanes.
Virginia to Pennsylvania.
Uh huh.
Mac Volvo will show you stats that the amount of business they lose or lost in dollars due to deliveries being stuck on 81, employees not being able to get work on time. It's a ripple effect throughout the region.
Happy to be supportive of that. And as you know, the governor announced a huge plan to widen 270 down in the Washington area and 495, the Beltway. It's a little bit easier to widen 81, I think, because-
We'd like to think so.
Down there, it's a pretty litigious crowd. But he's got a, you know, the Secretary of Transportation is, got some big plans. Obviously, some of that, those commitments are being made to transit, which is so important down in the Washington area. But anything I can be supportive of and helpful to you on 81 or on 70, I'm happy to-
Thank you.
-lend my help and communicate it back to the board.
That's-
Is there something pending that is?
There, there are potentially. So on Interstate 81, we have an application in, the state does, for the next phase of the interstate widening, as Commissioner Kiefer mentioned. It is, right now, with a widening from the Potomac River and even into West Virginia up to the first exit, Williamsport in Maryland. After that, it will neck, back down to two lanes again. And the statistics run up and down the, the course of 81 as well as 70. Volvo, who we've, we've recently just had some of our bond readers in this week, and next week we will too. One of the things that they look at is the infrastructure, obviously, and how we're serving our businesses, retail and manufacturing.
Oh, boy. Hey, John. How are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard. So those tax dollars lost and unemployment is, is a very big deal for us. You can see that the, the interstates are partially our lifeblood. The next, actually the largest taxpayer of all in Washington County is Premium Outlets, which is on Interstate 70. And we have a very large project. We've been working with the state for, for a number of years for a cloverleaf, or partial cloverleaf on the Interstate 70 and Maryland 65. So that will help our economy. That will help our visitors, and that will help folks get into and out of the city of Hagerstown as well. So that's handy. One of the things that-
What is the status of that cloverleaf?
The cloverleaf was just, just approved at the end of last month. So, but we'd like to say that we think, we're kind of frugal up here. We think it can be done a little, little cheaper. I think the latest estimate was $80 million. My staff put together a number that's probably well under 60. It's probably closer to 40. We'd like to think that, you know, with some, some economical investment, it would, it would probably be much cheaper than 80. So we've talked to Greg Slater. He's, he's agreeable that it's, it's on their agenda and would like to get done. We'd, we would just like to see a little bit of dash here and dash there of, of investment. And by no, no doubt, is the bridge of Interstate 81 over the Potomac a, a big, a big part of that. So we'd like to thank the state for that.
Well, 81's a little above my pay level, but that cloverleaf is not.
Yes.
So let me maybe work with you, Rob, on that and see if it can't be expedited at all.
Okay. We have a very nice image I'd be glad to share with Emily that would get in your mind's eye, what that looks like. Very simple. What we're trying to do is work with the state to use existing lands. So no, no new lands would need to be purchased, as you mentioned, stay out of the litigious nature of it. And basically puts, put a little bit of asphalt down that'll help traffic keep moving. And there's a very, very encouraging economic development going on down there that I think you'd, you'd appreciate seeing as well.
Well, that's a great example of why I'm out here. Because that sounds a little, for me, a little more manageable and exciting to work on than the federal government.
Yeah. We also are very encouraged by the UIP, the Urban Improvement Project, which the governor, and I know you're very well aware of, bids for both the Bisfa, our downtown education hub, as well as the Maryland Theater came in over the past two weeks. So it does appear that this summer, as, as early as this summer, there will be, and I know Delegate Quarterman's working on, and Senator Sarafini, of a bulldozer or shovel in the ground, some type of event where we could have perhaps you and the governor out and, and celebrate that success.
Fabulous. Yep. Senator Sarafini is one of the fiscal moderates that I hope each party could get a lot of because he's, a lot of common sense there. Speaking of that, I see Commissioner Barr has joined us. Yep. Thank you, John, for all the-
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. I've spent the last eight and a half hours on the road, and two of which, I'll have to say, has been sitting on 270 and 70-
Yep.
-trying to get back.
Sorry about that, but thank you.
It's a Friday afternoon, and 270 is a, is a parking lot.
Thank you for always helping me whenever I, you're available and can help.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that over the years.
Always good to see Emily.
This is you, sir.
Yeah. So what are the other issues that, isn't there a big, another development?
Cascade down.
Cascade down center is a-
Yes. Very, very exciting prospects. Would you like me to speak with you?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Very exciting prospects on Cascade. I think we're as close now as we've ever been to actually seeing a shovel in the ground there. Our, our, under our master developer agreement, the most exciting part recently was that we had local, local agencies, private design firms and so forth, architects and civil engineers go to Korea to visit with some of the potential investors there with our master developer. So the word back from them is, is quite encouraging. Additional agreements were signed, and there is, in fact, feasibility- and there is, in fact, feasibility studies going on now that, that are indicating something very productive could be happening this, this summer or end of the fall.
Important thing to mention on that, there's 16 or 20 people went, went on their own dog.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Great news in that prevention of that project.
Right, right.
Very good to hear.
Yeah.
What's your background, Rob? How long have you been administrator?
About one year, yes. March 25th, I think, is that right?
March 20th is my day.
28th, his dad's birthday, that's when I started, yeah, yeah. But I worked for the, background is an engineer, and I worked for, have worked for the county for 15 years before that, so, and one of the things, speaking of that, if you, if you have just another second or two, first of all, I really eat up the data that you give back, maybe it's the engineer in me, but the data feedback and customer service is something that we've all been very, very strategic on, the RCO, Mr. Hovis, our CFO, Ms. Greaves is here, and others throughout, throughout the county staff. In fact, we came up with a slogan that I thought you might appreciate, which is committed to customer service and dedicated to progress. We did a, we did a survey of our entire staff, and that, that's what the entire staff selected as, as their, their slogan. We've broken it down, I know the beer's waiting, but since, since you asked, I'm going to go ahead and share this information. We've broken it down into five service lines, public safety, education, infrastructure, economic development, and human services, to try to strategize on various aspects of what we can do, and how even those tie in together through customer service. One of the things that we did get back, some good news, we didn't get all of the tax revenue that might have helped, but we did get a small amount, SSTAT, 485,000 came back that we thought we weren't going to, or we were going to have to spend. We were able to use that for more education and, and other various needs throughout the county that, that are very, very appreciative of, that, that cost for SSTAT didn't go up. We were really hoping that with some of the, some of the revenue that might come about, that HUR would have, the Highway User Revenues would have come about, we've, have a number that's, I think, since 2011, is about 65 million that we've lost out on, on HUR.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah, it's, but to the credit of our, our, our staff, as well as our commissioners' frugal and prudent nature, we've managed through it, like other counties, but it does, it does draw, so, we're hoping...
What's the current status that you understand HUR is at, for you guys?
Dollar value, I know, I think we're back over a million, is that right, Sarah?
Yeah.
That we anticipate getting, but when we were at, at a peak of about 9 million, and even the low was closer to 7 million a year, 1 million is certainly, certainly still something we have to overcome, so...
When I say 1 million, would only pave one mile of road?
One, one new mile, yeah, that's right.
Fifty miles of county roads.
No, that was a huge mistake, but I, and I think I was in the Legislature when we did part of it, but it's proven to be just a calamity as far as the condition of local roads. And I drive probably, or am driven, probably 75,000 miles a year. And, yeah, my back teeth are still chattering, but that's, that's an example of where Mako and MML are kind of crawling back into normalcy, but even with Governor Hogan, who I think is very supportive of you, it's, it's like pulling teeth to get this reinstated. And all I can say is, whoever accomplishes it, and getting you back to the levels that you were accustomed to, will, well, you can pretty much retire on that as a legacy, because it's money well spent.
Yeah, they will be heroes, for certain.
Yeah, and I'm sorry that the, that situation has occurred.
And, and just a point of clarification, it's roads, but what it has done, there's other funds that we've had to draw from to pay for roads, and then it, it creates a real tension on the overall budget, is what it does. For instance, we'd like to fund schools more, but because of the road funds that have to be matched in public safety and so forth, it just draws from all the other, all the other service lines that we have, so...
Well, every two weeks, we vote on 440 million dollars in contracts on average, I mentioned 50 to 60, and it's a, it's painful to me to see these huge chunks of money being allocated for things that are not anywhere near the high priority that local roads are. And the state made a big mistake, the Legislature didn't, once again, I don't have clean hands, because we were grabbing money left and right to restore funding at the state level, and it's proven to be a big mistake. Sorry to, I'm sorry to, that issue keeps getting only partially dealt with.
Who makes the final decision to return that money back to the communities, the counties, Highway User Revenues? Who would make that decision?
Well, I think the Governor is in charge of all of that, but he is, you know, he's expressed himself very vocally to me that he's totally in favor of it, but I'm, I'm a little surprised that it hasn't certainly been brought back to the levels you had, and then the monies that were not allocated, that's a second issue, but getting it back to the right levels is, I know that they're moving in that direction, but there's no program that's done more harm and resulted in less good for such a small amount of money, relatively speaking. I'm not, you know, it's a big chunk money statewide, but everywhere I go in Maryland, outside of Annapolis, except for some of the really wealthy, larger counties, this issue has just been murder for them. And I'm just sorry that everybody had to go through it, and now you're trying to recover, and that's not easy also. But where you can fit me into a strategy, I'm more than happy to be helpful, and all I can say is, there's a lot of money in Annapolis, and there's a lot of, sometimes I reach down in my chair at the Board of Public Works, and there's extra money there that's fallen underneath the cushion. So, it's not money necessarily, it's priorities, and I, I think that issue is lost on some of the, some of the, or at least has lost its position of importance down in Annapolis.
We, we have a can-do spirit, so what we'd like to do is get you that Interstate 70-65 interchange information, because if we can grow the tax base, then what we can do is keep the, keep the tax rates, these commissioners have very much wanted to keep tax rates constant, if we can grow the tax base, we can make up for some of that HUR, so...
Administrator Slater's there every two weeks, and Transportation Secretary Rahm is there, and always a big fat group of transportation projects we're voting on.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe there's room for one more.
We'll get you, we'll get you that information.
And, anything else that is...
Unless you have any other projects you'd like to...
I'm not in a rush, I'm just suggesting...
You look awful thirsty.
Well, can I just comment for a minute on that?
You take your time.
I mean, the reason I feel so strongly about craft beer is because of the families that are associated with it. And I was in Frederick earlier and stopped by Attaboy Brewery, run by Carley and Brian Ogden, and they're a family that moved from California and Oregon to Maryland specifically to open a brewery. And they have a electric place, I mean, they have a tap room, they have a huge clientele. If you get a chance to have their cream ale, I had one at lunch today with them. And it's a wonderful thing to see the free enterprise system produce something like that, but they are, and they have a small two-year-old, Carley is due in four weeks with their second child, but they say very candidly, we never would have located in Maryland if we'd known that the Legislature was this unresponsive. And it's a tragedy, because they're, they're not going anywhere, and we're going to fix it, I believe, but it's a disservice to those families that are running these businesses to treat them like we're the elite down here in Annapolis, we, actually, you should be thanking us for what we've done for you, I mean, if you can believe it. And it turned into kind of a circus of ego paybacks, I guess, and other things, and they got completely forgotten. So, if you have a chance with Antietam and some of the ones in Washington County, please give them a pat on the back, tell them we've just begun to fight, and that we're going to make Maryland a state that from a regulatory standpoint and a statutory standpoint is just as friendly as Virginia and every other state in the country. But it, you really, it almost, it makes me a little emotional sometimes when I think of what they must think about the Legislature, having gone down there and, and gone through what they did this last session. Paul, I, I don't mean to, you were obviously accepted from everything that I just said about, I'm talking about a couple of people at the, what?
I supported your bill, fine.
Well, fabulous, thank you, yeah. But you know what I'm saying, it's, it's the, the people that are actually affected get ignored, get forgotten in the hand-to-hand combat down there, so, give them a pat on the back if you can from the commissioners here, and thank you again for your letter of support, meant a lot to me.
Thank you.
And thank you for my pin. Yeah.
Glad to see you wear it.
Yeah, I'm going to put it on right now if I don't poke myself. I have a couple of these in my dresser drawer, and I don't know why I didn't put it on today.
We have a couple more for you, too. The more you visit, the more pins you'll have.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you for the kindness of letting me swing by, and Emily is my point person, if anyone needs any follow-up on this, and, you know, just keep me in the loop. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Yep, thanks, sir.
Good to see you.
All in favor?
Very good.
Hi.
Yes, yes.
Well, yes.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.